This meeting of the city Kingston's only Board of Appeals will now come to order. My name is Brian Cafferty. I'll be chairing this proceeding. I'm gonna take a moment to explain how the Zoni Board of Appeals functions. The board is comprised of five members and two alternates. We've been appointed to serve the citizens of the city of Kingston, and we perform the service to the best of our abilities on a voluntary unpaid basis. Still 2023, we're not getting paid. The other board members are? Don?
Don Martin.
Mary Newbauer.
Mary Newbauer. There will be a period of public comment this evening for each variant request that has been presented. The period is an opportunity for individuals to make a statement of opinion, not to engage in debate. Each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Speakers must be brief and to the point to allow everyone a chance to speak. Speakers must address the board as a whole, not individual members, and not other speakers or audience members. Professional demeanor is expected. Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
The first order of business is to have a motion to approve the minutes from December 18.
I'll say it.
All in favor? Well, we're gonna go right to Grant Street because we don't have time to be signed here, right? So. Come on the back burner for now. I am going to ask counsel to do a brief. There were a number of questions regarding this and certain conflicts with our code, having to do with corner lots, and our counsel has been nice enough to do some really good research and came up with a really, really great and confusing answer to the problem. But anyhow, we're gonna tell you how we're gonna approach this based on the comments.
And the police enforcement officer, we interviewed this and he, both of us can't correct as to this reading of the codes. And normally in R1, we have side yards would be five feet. However, under our regulations, the lot and bulk requirements for R1 districts, there are certain changes, which are footnotes three and four for the R1 district minimum yard requirements. And under those, in the case of a corner lot, the the yards are separate line. So basically, in the case of corner lots, consider that there are two fronts, which would still have the 15-foot requirement. So for this front, there would be nothing needed, the front on Grant Street. For the front on Lincoln Street, there would be an 11-foot variance required. And then, under footnote three, there are considered in addition to the two one yards, there are two side yards, but there is no rear yard. So with the two side yards, you would think you would refer back to the regular side yard requirements, but again, it does not. It says that in these circumstances, the first side yard in an R1 district would be 21 feet. So we already have 30 feet in this technical side yard, so no variance is required. And then the other side yard, again, is four feet here. So we need a 11-foot variance. So since this is a corner lot as opposed to a regular like a lot, instead of one-foot variance is on either side, 11-foot variance is our whole. On the long.
Right, but the other sides?
Yeah, I used that improper term. This is technically a front. So these are two fronts, and these two are sides.
Side, side.
Yes.
So only one side needs to be?
One side is 25 feet, and the other side, it says 15 feet.
Oh, okay, so I think we're getting this.
The other side should be less than 15 feet.
I thought the one side was nothing less than five feet.
That is the normal.
That's why I was saying, but this is under the law.
Under the line of requirements, they have this footnote three that adjusts it for a corner lot.
You had a recent change?
That is not a recent change. And if you want me to get in more depth, at least, well, this is basically the way that given the notes here, that the way that it has to be interpreted. And it was the least restricted. You could say, okay, these are the fronts and sides, but then you'd have need greater variances. So that's where, where.
So before last month, there was no variance needed here?
No, there's always gonna be. You had, there was what, here that went here at one foot.
Right, but now it's 11 and 11.
Now, yeah, because normally it would be five feet in R1 district. So all these houses over here, that's why they have just oftentimes just a driveway in between them or something, because it's only five-foot lot lines. Since this is their setup. So, so since this is a corner lot, under the footnote on the lot and bulk requirements, we'd raise that to 11 feet.
Okay. We know.
So the same would have any question regarding?
Well, if they have a discussion about this. So initially, the variance was much more minimal until we determined that because of the corner lot, it really changed the dynamic. So now we have two variances that are pretty substantial. You know, more than two-thirds of the, of the distance. So that's one of the things we have to take into account. So let's, let's take a moment and just go through the criteria. Of an area variance criteria. I can actually find one. We know that the two, the two basic issues, I don't think it changes community character that significantly, because we do have a lot of homes where the side yards are very narrow. And under the normal code, it would only be five feet, but because it's a corner lot, they, for whatever reason, they put it to 15 feet. So. He's got a copy of the new variance criteria, I mean, the area variance criteria, okay. So I don't think it's gonna change the character of the neighborhood based on the proximity of homes, closeness of homes in that area. The other, the other criteria is, you know, whether the benefits offered by the applicant can be achieved by some other feasible method for the applicant to pursue other than area variance. See any other option here for him, other than to pursue an area variance.
Sorry, or if you only offer, we'd be the not going to ask.
Yeah.
Now, number three, whether the area variance is substantial. Well, you know, being that it went from five feet to 15 feet, now makes the variance considered substantial. Yet there's a number of other homes where the side yards, the side yard setback is five feet. It's nothing more than a driveway separating. I don't think it's gonna have a, the proposed variance is gonna have any kind of adverse effect on the physical environmental condition of the neighborhood. And of course, whether the alleged difficulty was self-created. Well, I mean, it's self-created in that he's looking to build this house, and the lot is substandard, and yes, it is self-created. So on the basis of that, we have to determine whether or not we want to provide this variance under these circumstances. Now, any thoughts?
Can I just make the board aware, I just wanted to point one thing out. This is in the city of Kingston, done about 12 years ago. Corner lot, went through the city, but all approvals. Many exact situations, but it's interpreted where our side, this out here was a side yard, five foot right up to the tee. This is Jervis Street, this is Ohio. This was a recent build. I heard everything that was just said, I understand it, but if the regulations haven't changed, we were approved for that 12 years ago, and there's several others that have another one in, or in the corner lot as well. So I just want the board to be aware of that, but as you just mentioned, it doesn't change the character, but we have these in other parts of the city.
Well, my guess is what happened is they didn't catch the conflict between the code and didn't read the footnotes. Had they done that, they probably would have realized that the requirement's 15 feet instead of five.
For the corner.
Yeah, for a corner lot, yeah. I mean, it would have been, it could have been easy to miss that.
Oh, and just because that has changed doesn't necessarily mean that now they have to deny your, they need to consider it, but make sure that they approve the correct variance as opposed to the same, you know, one-foot variance before. And yes, it's going to affect their determination with one foot, but.
Because last meeting, it was, it was on one side, you didn't remember, right?
And there was, and, and, but. Going through the research, that's one of the reasons why we needed to like, is there was contradictory proportions where the definitions, the main definitions are different from what's in the footnote, and that's what, yeah.
So, again, any, any thoughts? Anthony, you're reading?
Yeah, I'm just reading the letter from the neighbors.
I don't entirely agree that it's a severe deviation from neighborhood norms, but.
No, I mean, I don't think, as far as the size of the structure or even necessarily the setbacks, whether or not it's a significant deviation, but you know, the garage doors on the street like that, you know, are very visually different than, on than all the other houses in, in those, in that area.
Yeah, that is true. At one point in time, didn't we not talk about putting the garage doors over here?
I thought, I thought, well, I don't know, there was discussion down on where that, that, that has come up.
You guys do, under, looks like you see on the ballot to, when you grant the variance, to try to impose conditions if you think something needs to be potentially changed with garage door, or, you know, there may be something within. If that's.
So.
May, can I say something?
Oh, yes.
So I understand the idea of having you maximize the amount of living space in the house. Why not make it a little smaller? Why couldn't it be a two-bedroom instead of a three-bedroom and a two-car garage instead of a three-car garage?
It is a two.
I think the issue is, because this is an undersized lot, it's only 32 feet wide.
Right.
So even with four feet on either side, we're looking at 23, 24-foot, you know, wide house, which is maybe pretty slim.
Yeah.
Just to get everyone to know, we had it like that, small, it was originally proposed for a three-bedroom. Now we made it smaller in length and width, and we're doing a two-bedroom.
Yeah, I saw in the, I saw on the three bedroom, it's still proposed for a three, it said three-bedroom, two-baggage.
I think, I'm not really saying now, but then 24 feet really wouldn't make it a, that viable.
Oh, that's all right.
Did you think of moving the garages to the other end?
I did not.
You did not?
No, sorry.
No, but.
So, I, I mean, part of my, part of my challenge here with this is, is that this is, this is, there's like a, there's a dual use going on here. So the, the whole lower level of the building is going to use basically as a garage. And it's only the upstairs that's a residential. And so, and it's putting this, this, you have three garage doors facing Grant Street, which is, is.
Lincoln.
I mean, and I keep, I keep confusing streets. Yes, it's Lincoln. So that presents a design that is somewhat substantively different than the rest of the, the rest of the neighborhood. And it's not a, it's not a primary residence. This is a rental, rental property. I think, I know that, I know that at one point in time.
This is, that's a bigger one, do you have a current one?
Is it great? This, this one is where you, this one's the.
That's the first floor.
That's the, I only have the second floor.
That's the second floor. There's only one elevation here. I, I listen.
This is the one that the opening, these are walls, those walls, that that first wall is on top of these four walls.
How do you get in and out of the, you know, there's no first floor doors, how do you get?
No elevation.
It's on the outside of the.
Right here, it would be on the side.
It looks like it's right over here, it's in.
There's like a, that.
The exterior is a lot there.
Over here, yes.
Yes. Where we see the walkway.
Now, because this is a front yard here, we talked about putting a door here. Weren't we, weren't we moving access to the upstairs, to this side, and not here? No, the door would be here for the garage, because this would be separate for the tenant. So there would be enough parking on this side for them to go up right here from the upstairs. So only.
Really, to like the number of regular doors that go into the garage. Because this faces Grant Street.
That's Grant Street.
How to make that go up from there?
So I think for the purposes of granting the variance, the real consideration of placing the door and stuff has to do with the undesirable change, making sure that, you know, looks in conformity with the rest of the houses on the street, not necessarily where.
Well, the only, in my opinion, the only way that you make this house look in conformity with what it has on the street is you move the garage entrances to one of these narrow sides and put two doors instead of three. I mean, am I wrong? Even though there was houses on that street that have garage doors facing Lincoln Street, same way.
Yeah, but not, not green or green anyway. Yeah, yeah.
Something on the right side of the house is a garage facing the river. That, that's the, that's the challenge for, for.
I mean, visually, theoretically, you guys could require that they have a different plan with only two garage doors or something. As, as.
Station double-sized garage door, and it would also be.
We have, we have two residences right now directly across the street that has the garage doors, and then I forget the gentleman on the corner, who's sort of, which authority is around the end too.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not free, but.
It's the simple fact that. The only thing on that entire side of the house is garage doors, right? So.
It just goes back to my problem with, and no, no offense, I get that you want to use, that you want, need that garage space for, you know, everything, but, you know, we also have to, we also have to consider the neighborhood and trying to keep, you know, trying to improve something that's in, that's a little more in keeping architecturally and design-wise with the, with the neighborhood. And, and, and having three garage doors on one whole side facing the street is, there's no, I don't, I'm unaware, I've been over there, I'm unaware of any houses like that. And, and, you know, it is a rental, it is a rental unit. Does, does anybody else have any thoughts on this? Is the public hearing still open?
I have a question.
Sure.
What is the new code?
So the setbacks would be, the, the variance required would be less, but this would still need variance under the new code, but it would be, be smaller variance if I'm. Yeah. You know, the code, the new code looks to develop substandard lots like this, but this, this would still need a variance. It's just, just a little too narrow here for. You could have timed us on there, because there's no, there's no minimum square footage requirement anymore, so. But yeah.
The, the use of this downstairs area as a garage, I get that ergonomically, it makes a whole lot more sense in order to, to utilize that space, to have the garage doors in this orientation, it makes total sense. Otherwise, if you put only two doors and you put them on the end, one of these ends of the houses, you know, over here, or over here, wherever, you know, you end up with a tandem situation as opposed to.
I mean, in condos, that's common as can be, you know?
Yeah.
So it's not like that's not usable.
Do you need three garage doors?
I need, I'd just, I would like the space for three.
Speaking of the size of.
I, yeah, and I have, I have a lot of vehicles and motorcycles. I do have a table car, but I don't bring it home.
Yeah.
And I would bring it there. I mean, if I go with two doors, I could put two doors on that side. So if I do two big doors on the one side, it's.
Well, it's, it's a matter, it's not just, like, if you're taking up the same amount of length or feet, two large doors, they're gonna be the same problem.
Actually, with the better of the three smaller doors, they're double-sized.
But like, you know, possibly, I could, you know, two doors or one double-sized door, and then some windows that make it look like it, you know, makes it look more like a house. I'm also concerned about the entry, like, there's no drawing or visual of the entry and, and, you know, you see, you're proposing a, a house without a door and like the, the street, the, like, the, the relationship between the, the biggest thing about community character, which is why we're talking about garage doors, is the relationship between the public and private space, right? So when, if, if someone has to go around the side and up a set of stairs to get to a space, right? It's like, it, it doesn't create that area of like, like welcome, like space, you know, in between, you know, like, like, every, you know, you have a porch and a front door, this is where someone goes when they're greeted at a house, like, that's what kind of makes a house.
Yeah, except for.
You're not getting any of it.
Except for, that is a very common scenario with a building like this, where you have a garage, and you have an apartment over a garage, it's a set of stairs to go up on the side of the building. I can point to a hundred.
Most of those, though, are pre-existing, not fully converted as you, as structures.
There, there's probably 30 of them in the city of Kingston that are just carryhouses.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I mean. It's not on the street.
I know, they're behind house.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, which is, right? You don't have that same direction.
Yeah, there's, there is no intersection with the public thoroughfares and the coming and going with it. And, and, I mean, it's.
Actually, Mr. Washington agrees to.
I could, I could do two doors there, I just want the doors to be on that side, that's really my biggest thing. I could do two, I would, I would do two doors there and one, and put windows, put the two doors here and a wall, you know, windows here, or two doors, two doors here and a wall here.
Whatever the board would prefer. Yeah, we definitely have to be a window there, not a, not like a full wall, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Something to break it up.
Yeah.
So you're, you're mainly, you do, you want to avoid putting the garage doors on, you don't want to put the, two garage doors on, on either end of the house, you want it on the right side.
What are the, are you saying doors like the same?
Just like that.
Exactly, yeah.
Single garage.
So the same, yeah, penetration. Size, so you guys can make that a condition.
Yeah, these are, these are eight-foot doors.
Yeah.
Right, did these stand for five doors? You would make two, two chores there, right?
Yeah, these are eight-by-sevens, I think. What we could do. That's the same, that's the size, like, same thing with two doors. You could still get three vehicles in there with two doors.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a big time, I'm, I'm slow, but. We could do double windows, just like that, on the one end, and two garage doors, and that's what the top's. This is one that's right down on Ohio Street, very similar to what's going up. We could do two windows like that spaced, and then two garage doors, and it would look just like that.
We group the two doors together here, a door with a window going in.
Do you have any pictures or drawings of the, of the entry, right?
Yeah. This is, on, if you look at this right here, this is the entry for upstairs.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, I don't know if the first, upper floor elevation of that entry looks like that's what we're trying to figure out. Like, what, if you're standing on the street.
It's a set of stairs.
What does this look like?
It's a set of stairs.
Yes.
Set of stairs.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
You know, landing at the top. I mean, it's very nicely done.
I'm like, I said, I'm sure it's a, a carriage house.
It looks like this.
Well, we've done many of these.
That's what the site. I mean, he, that, that's what it is, it's gotta start over here and run up.
Well, I mean, this, this shows it open here, so I'm like, is the.
I think that's the beginning of the stairs, right?
That's what I got, that's kind of what I'm confused.
Yeah.
You have any other thoughts?
I'm sorry?
You have any other thoughts?
No, I just, I agree the size of the, of the building.
Well, that, it's, it's, it's not so much the size of it, it's the number of them. Yeah, I, I think the house looks more residential, has a more residential feel that's consistent with the other architecture. By grouping the two doors together and creating a single entry door with a, with a side light window, it, it would, it would really dramatically change the way this looks.
And it would be more pleasing to the eye if you go through the neighborhood as far as it looked like a house on the bottom, not just like a storage garage on the bottom.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great-looking carriage house, it's a very looking house.
Yes, it would make it look more like a carriage house than.
Yeah.
Be happy to do it.
Okay. Anybody in the mood to make a devotion to either approve or deny?
Is it still open to the?
There anybody online?
Well, I asked, we need to close the public hearing on this.
I don't think so.
He asked, did you just? He asked, did you just, did anybody want to have this?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, he wants to sign in.
Uh, just state your name and your address for the record.
Kenny Thomas Mains, seventy six Grant Street, uh, Kansas City, West Brooklyn Street. Um, first off, there's a misunderstanding, this misconception. That there is no other use for the property. I know that two people are interested, had, well, one person was interested in buying and one person still was interested in buying. Um.
Well, I don't know there was any debate over the use, but.
But nothing, well, now you've mentioned that there is no other use.
No, I, I think you misunderstood.
You have no other way to use the property?
Um, no, no, there's a way to accomplish what he wants to do with the property than an area of variance, it's different.
Oh, okay, probably.
Yeah.
Or other ways to sell the property.
Yeah, I'm sure there are other uses for the property. Um, the neighbor could buy it and turn it into a garden if they wanted to.
Neighborhood's using it for parking, they could buy it and use it as a parking lot because that's what they're doing illegally.
And putting a building this close to the road, no, 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 no matter what else is done, this building is gonna be four feet from the road.
There are a lot of houses four feet from roads, uh, or not much further than that.
That would make it a good idea.
Well, it's a city, I mean, and albeit that's a suburban part of the city, I get it, um, and, and, and perhaps it's closer to the road. Than any of the other houses in that neighborhood, they have a lot of deeper front yards, um, but. Yeah.
Now, you, you've indicated this, as you said, this is not a small change, this is a major change as far as space goes.
Yeah, the, the setback that we, variance, the variance that we have to give now is substantial.
Right.
And it's, I'm not gonna disagree with yous, we were in agreement there, anything else?
Uh, basically, I think, of the fact that he does have some other people that are interested in the property, that it's, they have a lot of.
I can say I'm the owner of it and nobody, I've talked to everybody over there, there's been no interest. I talked to every homeowner over there. Yeah, so do you, you didn't have any interest in it?
Yeah, well, after all this, I, maybe my feelings. Remember my, remember my rule that you just, you communicate to the board. Not indirectly between one another because that almost always leads to things getting out of, out of hand, but yes. Um, so we have a application before us, a person wants to buy the property, has a plan for the property. That plan requires, um, uh, us to either render it, uh, either approve a area of variance or not approve of variance. At this point, I think it's a move to, to discuss other people that might wanna buy the property and do things. Uh, that's not relevant, uh, for germane to this conversation, unfortunately. Um, so, again, I will put out to the, to the board, does anybody wanna make a, um, motion either to approve?
I would like to speak.
Oh, okay, you, you didn't say that, no, okay. But go ahead.
Yeah.
Okay, so, Michael Robleary, uh, live at eighty eight Grant Street, um, directly to the door. Where there would be the four foot space, uh, you know, next to, between the garages and my property. Um. I, I, I just had a couple of questions, did the survey conflict with any of the property lines that are established there?
That's the current survey right there.
Okay, and, uh, it's supposed to have thirty two feet, does that also include like a, um, a buffer zone for a sidewalk? Is that thirty two plus the buffer zone or is it?
Like thirty two plus the buffer zone.
And, and what is the buffer zone, Brian? Does anybody know?
No, but this is the buffer on the end, this is the thirty two, this is the buffer.
Because I think there's about forty feet there between my established property line and the road. My concern was that, uh, my house being built in nineteen thirty six was the first property to be developed there. And, uh, I have the original city engineer's blue line drawings, it was two fifty foot lots, it's combined into a hundred foot lot. With my garage and house on the, uh, north fifty foot piece, um. I'm the second owner, the original owners were very meticulous about the fence lines and the property lines. They had established already property lines with this adjacent piece that we're talking about, the, the blue wire fence that's on. The back of your, is, is actually the fence from the.
It's on this.
Yeah, okay. And then, um. Basically, like, after they built the farmhouse later on, they developed, putting it down to Beet Street and nothing was ever built on that parcel because it's a substandard. Parcel, so, uh, I just wanna make sure I'm not gonna lose any property, I mean, this, this makes.
Everybody can't go down the block, they take two feet away from everybody down the block.
Okay, so that was one of my concerns, um. Also, like, the variances, it's a thirty two foot lot and we're asking for eleven feet on both sides, that's twenty two feet out of thirty two feet. It's a lot of variance, in my opinion.
It is, but it, it, and I also look at it as that there's several properties on that street. Where the side yards technically, because it's not a corner, they're not corner lot, they have. Side yard setbacks at five feet, um, so it's not unheard of in that neighborhood to have those kinds of tight separations between, uh, between the properties.
Okay, I, I, I just, my first time looking at a survey, it seems to represent what's actually there or, or in my opinion, what should be there, so, uh. It doesn't seem to be a problem with that. I also wanted to ask, um, the garages. We know they're gonna be eight foot wide doors, but how high is the, you said that the, in the previous meeting, the first garage floor was gonna be state built? How high would that floor be? Would it be like? A full size garage?
No, no.
They're eight, they're eight by seven.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Standard door to door.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just asking because I know you have a few trailers and stuff and I don't know if they had to be higher.
Uh, they won't be able to.
Close it in there?
No, they'll, they'll, with that one, that one trailer is, uh, special orders, eight feet high inside a little one, the other one's a standard height.
I just didn't know what, you know, what you're gonna use it for, uh.
Yep.
For how high it had to be, I understand the, the living quarters is modular construction, pretty straightforward. Um, just didn't know how high the entire structure was going to be, you know, so, uh.
Yeah, I will tell you right now, if they were, if these were showing as nine or ten foot doors, we would be having a way, uh, discussion, so.
The same.
The residential doors.
The detail that went into open, was going into the way that's gonna be cleaned up.
Um, well, I, I'm still gonna be on record as opposing the variances, uh, leaving up to you guys.
Yeah, um, I hope, um, if it does end up getting approved, I hope some of these, these changes are just stipulated to, they're gonna be part of the approval process. I hope that you appreciate that we are trying to make it look, you know, more like the other houses in the, in the area. Um, so.
Can I ask a question also, more beyond the appearance of it?
Do you mean in my, which, for the.
Tell us your name and.
Oh, that's true. My name's Bob Holes, I live on seventy two Grant Street. Um, the, the parents, okay, I, I understand that, but like, the other question is like, for your own safety, like. I just, like, I live on Grant Street and to make those turns onto Lincoln Street, people fly up out of there. And I just pictured you in a garage with a four foot, how do you back in and out and then now a trailer like that? It just worries me, the thought of it, and then the thought too, if it's a rental, where can people park if that whole side is garages? Like, I, I don't know where the cars go, but we've had an accident or two there that I can recently remember, the people, you just can't see. You know, and it's, it just seems so hard, how far do you have to back out of the garage before you can see whether it's clear? People go pretty quick, so that's, I mean, that, the twenty three, I'm kind of, like, the appearance is sort of secondary, is this a safe place to put it?
You might wanna consider.
Backing in.
Well.
Well, that was a good point too of that word.
Trust me, I'll be very careful, I got a, I got a truck that's worth a hundred thousand dollars, so, that's only in that garage, it's not gonna be. So for parking, which I refer to here, there's, there's thirty feet of parking from the end of the, from the end of the, uh, should say. Looking at this side, from here to here, there's thirty feet of parking, so that's where the tenants will park.
Parked awakenings.
So are you, are you telling me, are you selling us a bill of goods with this green space here? I mean, that's, there's no, there's no invention of a parking.
Yeah, I mean, they, they. Well, they could park right here or, um.
But you're not allowed to park in a yard in the city of Kingston.
No.
There has to be a drive, there has to be a cut there and.
And if they were gonna park here.
I'd park right in front of the windows tree, right where they are, in this open spot since there's not gonna be two doors anymore, I'd put.
These park here or on the corner of Lincoln and DeShester Street, um. I'm very, very good friend of the owner of the property there, that I could park there.
This, this has somewhat been a troublesome thing about this whole process.
Yes.
We've never really gotten a full, clear set of plans so that we could look at the elevations. And now I'm like, looking at his yard and now you're telling me there's gonna be a driveway and a parking lot there? Is it, is that what's going here?
Park there.
Is, uh, from the neighbors, are, are there any snow parks, uh, are, is street parking allowed on these streets? I didn't know.
Well.
Grant Street it is, um, nobody goes to parks on Lincoln because, uh, they fly up the hill.
But, but are there, are there no parking signs there? I, I didn't.
No, there isn't. It is a, it's an apartment cor- it's apartment house in the corner.
Yeah.
So there's a parking lot there, there's another house which is a, across.
I'm just talking about street parking, like.
No, there's, there's no, there's no.
No, no parking.
No signs, I mean.
No signs in cities that made it a parking, street parking.
No parking signs there.
When, when you enter off DeShester Street, there's just a sign about, um, trailers or, or something trucks over a certain.
Oh, yeah.
City, the city, yeah, 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 um.
So there is technically.
Street, street.
Yes, there is.
All right.
Brian, I have one thing.
Okay.
Um, uh, I think one thing, uh, you have to consider or, uh, at, at least if you, uh, to approve it is. Uh, may get contingent on the DBW verification, uh, of the city right away, sure, it's just, it's not.
For sidewalks?
There is no sidewalk.
Well, I know where the city has, has.
Where their, where the DBW determines their, their basic easement, street easement goes, is that what you're talking about?
We've had a lot of issues with fences and painting walls and those things being in the city.
So, the surveyor didn't confirm that with the D, with the DPW as to what?
The easement.
The easement, where the street, where your property line and the street, and the, and the street survey right.
Didn't mark it.
Didn't mark it, sure.
Yes, it is.
Okay, well, all right, so if we do, uh, if we do grant this variance, it is gonna be contingent upon verifying where that is. So there's no, uh, conflict.
Okay, so being the last property to be developed on the street, basically. We know what the dimensions were in nineteen thirty six when it was woods all around my house and, uh. Since then, I'm sure Lincoln Street, the pavement has gotten wider or whatever, so. I just wanted to make sure that, um, there's actually enough room, including the easements and, you know, the buffer space and everything that, that it fits.
Yeah, I mean, they, they, they're marked here, but I'm sure, you know, this is, this is the right way.
How would it look say?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, typically, actually, they get it marked out like, you know, forty.
Not sure for, you know, over here.
And I know this now, in the winter, the snow, the DPW piles snow on that corner there to keep the intersection clear. And, uh, you're probably gonna have to go somewhere else now, but.
Okay, so I'm gonna.
Try again?
Yeah, I'm gonna try one more time, somebody says they have something else to say, they're gonna draw my. Is everyone done?
There's, there's nobody else online.
Is anybody online?
Well, uh.
Yes, I always forget about. Their second, I, I know, these poor people online, I forget about them, but not, that they're there. Anybody wanna?
Is, is it more than three?
Six, three.
Three, yeah, that's, that's, that's you, Don, in the commentary.
Thank you, Mary.
To approve with conditions regarding finding out the, the easement.
City.
City easement.
Easement, yeah.
The garage doors, the door and the windows, changing the front of Lincoln Street. Anything else, Tom?
So you wanna see a door on.
Well, I think that's what you're gonna do, right?
Yes.
Garage door, a door and then windows.
As I understand, the stipulation is that these two doors are gonna be grouped together.
Right.
Over here, there's going to be a.
One of the.
Single door with a.
Fine line.
So it makes it look more consistent with whatever else, we're getting rid of one of these garage doors.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
And the other stipulation is, is that we identify where this, where this line is.
The easement.
Yeah.
This in fact.
That'll really matter, yeah.
I mean, you would need that to issue the building permit anyway, right? I mean, if the, if the building permit and the stakeout didn't match the variance, you would be able to approve it.
That, that's correct, I, I just thought.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But at least an hour, I guess.
Yeah, 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 um, I, uh. I can agree with that, I, 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 I know whether it's doors or windows, in fact, I guess I don't really have a strong opinion, um, but. Uh, I also, because we've got the two doors, garage doors there, uh, I, I, I don't think that there should be enough, an additional driveway. I wanna make sure that there's not parking in the yard.
Yeah.
Right.
That's a good point.
Yeah.
So you're gonna have on-street parking with the tenants, I, I forgot about that.
Yeah.
That actually might help with slowing the traffic down on Grant Street.
Totally, yeah. Yeah, we, we.
Well. Things like that, things like that do tend to slow things down.
I gotta say, I gotta say that doesn't work, I sit at that, I sit at that stop sign in the corner, he's jester looking all the time and people run at it.
Yeah.
What do you, I mean, they took the like.
Uh. In, in, in street engineering standards, like narrowing through, in any way slows traffic down no matter what, so if you're adding cars or adding trees, whatever it is, you're narrowing the street and. It, I mean, it does slow people down, um, you know, so, uh.
It could, could, um, who's, uh, who's making these, who's making these changes? Um.
Well, the company did a rendering of that, uh, so you wanna know the rendering?
Yeah, I, I would like to see, I would like to see a final rendering of this side with the changes we discussed.
Before the, the building permits issued or?
Um, well, before we finalize, I mean, we, we can vote on it, we can vote on it, uh, subject to getting that, um.
Yeah, yeah, I, I.
I wanna see that.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to see the final rendering, but, um, but I, I think we can put on the table what we wanna see and. That way you know, you come back and that's up next on the render, so. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a long road, I think we're gonna.
Okay.
So, are you guys still moving to approve the variances with those conditions or are you moving to table vote? Um, I, I guess first off, uh, let's, or any motions, um, the public hearing is officially closed? Yeah, well, there was already an emotion, but yes, still.
Did we make a motion before that?
We're gonna make a motion, we're gonna do that right now, somebody needs to make a motion.
I make a motion.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second the motion, I'll close the program.
Make a motion?
Me.
Yeah, so, um, there's really no way for us to go ahead and approve the, um, but we're, we're inclined to do that. Um, what we just need to do to finalize this without any more public discussion or anything, we just need to see. public discussion or anything, we just need to see the final rendering. So it reflects what it is that we discussed. Is that okay? I hate to drag it out another, uh, another month, but I don't feel comfortable doing this and just hoping that it's going to be what, be what we discussed. Unfortunately, doesn't work well.
It did valuable to put on the table the stipulations that we have, I mean, in, in, in the list just so that we're everybody clear. All right. Which, uh, my question was, they're going to reduce it to two garage doors and add
A door.
And a door and a window. And there is no additional driveway or, or perp ducts other than to the garage door. Yeah, all right. And that's, that's, yeah, I know we want to put current location up, it, we, we're okay.
And is that, that, the driveway limitation that, is that applied to just Lincoln Street or like every, the entire property?
Yeah. Yeah, the only driveway being that connecting the doors to the street.
Just on Lincoln to those garage doors.
A lot of people could park on Grant Street too.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, some of the side yard setbacks that are already existing in that neighborhood are already pretty tight, you know, so it's like, visually from what's there, it doesn't seem
Visually, if you're going down Lincoln, I'm looking at one, one on one Lincoln or so, looks like seven. So if you're going down from there. So we remove one of the garage doors, replacing it with an entry door and window. No other driveways or parking areas on the, on the, uh, property and they'll need to verify with the DPW the city street easement location.
Yeah, so that's our proposed, our proposal.
Yeah. All right.
And was a new rendering included in that?
Yes.
Good thought.
Well, yeah, I mean, we're not going to actually make that motion until we have
See it.
Yeah, yeah, so that's just, hopefully we'll just all sign that next month.
All right, so in the meantime, if you want, if you're moving into table.
Yeah, yeah, I'll make a motion to table.
Awesome.
Why don't you give that to me? I'll scan and check that for the members.
Yeah, motion to table.
Um, who did the motion?
I motioned.
I sent my motion.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
It's a motion to table that we said yes to.
Yeah, yeah, this is.
What? We're going to have a new voting sheet specifically for that, but this is voting on the motion to table.
Okay.
I'm going to give you that to the whole
Okay. All right, so you now make your, make your understanding then?
No, it's all, it's all what we agreed to.
Yeah.
It's the removal of one of the doors, adding it an entry door with a window.
Yeah.
Um, no driveways or parking areas on the property.
And, yeah, yeah, but I don't think there's actually, um, voting on that.
That was a motion to table.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, that's, that's what I thought, that's why I just, I'm 100% sure.
I'm going to send this out to doors.
I just want you to Do you have no question? Did you say, all right, the two doors, garage doors on the one side? You said two windows and a regular door?
Regular door that
Regular door.
That go into
Yeah, entry door, doesn't matter. It's not on the end. It could be on
No, I'm talking, we're talking about the entry door.
Yes.
Next to the garage doors and by the way, it's on the
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, you, you make it look in like a natural doorway for a house that possibly can, and we'll probably be happy.
Yes.
Hopefully, hopefully you're happy.
Yes.
Doorway like nine.
More door, or on the
Not just a solid door.
If that's left on the, on the door on the Grant Street side.
Yeah, I was enough.
No, no, that was before with three doors, about the door being on Grant.
So no door on the street.
You're going to park on the street, well, there's got to be also parking somewhere in that area.
Yeah, I mean, just same as everybody.
Same as Yeah.
Yeah, anyways, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve it.
I second. All in favor?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I've seen those elevations, so I think Yes, I need a motion to, to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second to adjourn. All in.
And Don, you want to adjourn?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Do you want to adjourn?
Yes.
Good.
No, thank you. So Anthony?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.